Open the doors. Release.
It's not a kraken. Earthquake was enough. We don't need a kraken.
That was exciting.
I missed it. I was outside of my driveway. I was outside. I was up early doing some work.
And you did, I thought it was a truck.
Yeah, it's, I didn't, I didn't.
Yeah, I was at work at PSW.
I'm bummed because earthquake was not on my 2020 disaster bingo card.
I hope there's nothing left on your 2020 card. I hope you already called bingo.
It was a duel, Bert. Wait, did Ray call us? We didn't get a call from him.
Yeah, I know. I'm actually a fucker.
Hey Andrew, happy anniversary.
Oh man.
Thank you. The Reef is a very nice restaurant in Newport.
It is.
Very COVID friendly, you know, they keep you very spaced out. Outdoor dining available.
How much more spaced out can you get? Fine, you can't just, you can't open those doors and expect me to walk through.
I don't think that was a walk.
When life presents you with the opening line, you must follow through with the punchline.
Got to. Have the marky mark. Is he having technical difficulties?
As always.
I don't want to sound pushy, but we have a Quorum and a Patriot starting an hour and a half. Not that they're very exciting to watch this year, unfortunately. Maybe they'll finish two and 14 and they'll get a good draft pick.
There's Dr. Ryan.
Okay. All right.
He muted Dr. Ryan, but.
Yeah, he's. I guess that silly mute button.
Which one is mute?
Marcus.
Welcome to our town council meeting. For those of you, well, we'll start with the usual. Let's stand for a moment of silence and pledge allegiance. This is to the United States of America. To the Republic.
Indivisible.
Thank you all. Okay. Again, welcome to our November 9th Town Council meeting. For those of you at home, just as a reminder, star six will mute your phone, star nine will indicate you have a question, available to indicate and to raise a question. When called upon, please state your name and address for the clerk. And now we can begin with the roll call.
Mrs. Jukusa?
Here.
Ms. Abbott? Mr. Hamilton?
Here.
Ms. Capson?
Here.
Ms. Kelly?
Here.
Dr. Ryan?
Here.
Right here.
Here.
So I just want to make sure, could you hear me?
Yes.
Well, is Andrew, you couldn't. Okay, President's Executive Summary. Actually, just a brief update on the elections from the board of campuses. It appears that November 30th would possibly be the date for certifying the results of the election. That being said, our swearing-in ceremony council will be on December 7th. That's the tentative schedule using the November 30th date as a certification date. Until such time, our council will continue to do the business for the town. So we will now move on to our consent agenda.
Move to approve as presented.
All those in favor?
Mrs. Jukusa?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton? Mr. Capson?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Right here.
Hi. Next, we are sitting at the Board of License Commissioners. It is that time of year when we get to do the annual liquor license renewals. So bear with us, folks. First item is the annual liquor license renewal, Class A. We'll read them all and then vote on them. Is that okay? If we go that route like we've done in class?
By class, yeah.
We'll go, first one, Allen's Wine and Spirit, Inc., 301 East Main Road. Next, we have Barrera's Package Store, Inc., at 1965 East Main Road. Moriarty's Liquor Locker, Inc., 624 Park Ave. Top one. Osney and Co. Inc., doing business as Portsmouth Liquors, 1557 West Main Road.
Move to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Mrs. Jukusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Capson?
Aye.
Dr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Right here.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have our Class BH/BT, Roger Williams University, 144 Anthony Road.
Move to approve.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Mrs. Jukusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Right here.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have our Class BD. LLC, DBA, Anna D Cafe, 954 East Main Road. Fieldstones LLC, 980 East Main Road. Smith Harbor House LLC, DBA, 15th Point Road. Food Works Inc., DBA, Food Works Restaurant, 2461 East Main Road. Graziano's 501 Cafe LLC, 501 Park Ave. Green Valley Country Club, Inc., 371 Union Street. Those Crazy Kids LLC, DBA, Gulfstream Bar and Grove. Local Inc., DBA, Locals Kitchen and Cocktails, 657 Park Ave. 88 Restaurant LLC, DBA, Mindy's, 3351 East Main Road. TNDC Beach Club LLC, DBA, Newport Beach Club, 195 North Harbor Drive. Oceanside Enterprise LLC, DBA, Portsmouth Public House, 600 Clock Tower Square. Bopos Little Villu LLC, 880 East Main Road. Tremble's Bar and Grove Inc., 514 Park Avenue. And I have Bochi Estate, DBA, Valley Inn Restaurant, 2221 West Main Road.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abbott? Hamilton?
Aye.
Capson?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
And Ms. Right here.
Hi. Now we have our Class BD with counsel to revisit prior temporary approval of outdoor expansion of licensed premises.
Both of these were discussed. They had been given temporary approval and if there were any issues, then they may be brought back.
And we asked the police chief if he's had any issues down there at either location?
We're trying to find. Chief Peters?
Hello?
Hi, Chief.
We've had no issues down there, no reports of any thing as far as the outdoor sections have been included.
Even though it's not on there, chief, can you, same thing for locals?
Correct. No, no issues.
Move to approve the Class BV license with the outdoor service as it has been remaining the same hours, the same for both locations.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Jukusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Capson?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Right here.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have our Class BD, against the Newport National Golf Club, Inc., 324 Mitchell's Lane.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Jukusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Capson?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
And Ms. Right here.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have our Class BDL.
Move to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Mrs. Jukusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Capson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
And Ms. Right here.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Class D, I have to break these up because I am a member of the Portsmouth Portuguese American Citizens Club. So we'll go on the other four and then I'll just recuse on the last one. So first one is Alvaro E. Viera Memorial Post Home, Inc., the BFW Post 539822 Anthony Road. ACC Everything, doing business as a Quinique Country Club, 125 Montauk Country Club, 500 Anthony Road. And Sicona's Portsmouth Club, 145 Sicona Drive.
Move to approve. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Mrs. Jukusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Capson?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Right here.
Hi.
God bless you, Ms. Abbott.
Thank you.
The next one is just the Portsmouth Portuguese American Citizens Club abstaining or recusing of.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Mrs. Jukusa?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Capson?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Okay. Passes seven to zero. Next, we have our Class J. It's Newport following, Land Farm.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Mrs. Jukusa?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Hamilton?
Aye.
Captain?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Right here.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Onto our annual Sunday sales license here. We have Allen's Wine and Spirit, Inc., 3001 East Main Road. Barrera's Package Store, Inc., 1965 East Main Road. Moriarty's Liquor Locker, Inc., 624 Park Ave. Osney and Co. Inc., DBA, Portsmouth Liquors, 1557 West Main Road.
Move to approve. Second.
There?
Mrs. Jukusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Capson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Right here.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay, onto our annual liquor licenses with extended hours renewed between 2 AM and 6 AM. Melville Farms, Inc., DBA, Melville Farms, 1812 East Main Road. Quinique Donuts, Inc., DBA, Duncan Donuts, 1550 West Main Road. Portsmouth Donuts, Inc., DBA, Duncan Donuts, 3001 East Main Road. Drake Petroleum, Inc., DBA, Melville Extra Mark, 1568 West Main Road.
Just so you know, Extra Mark is the only one that's open 24 hours. The others open at 5 AM, which is why they need to have the extended hours.
Motion to approve. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Mrs. Jukusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Capson?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Right here.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Onto our particular license, annual new. Portega, EBA, Portega, 1965 East Main Road.
Move to approve. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Jukusa?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Capson?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Right here.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. And we have our daily liquor license, Class F1, Island Park Preservation Society, 21 Peach Street. We're tree lighting at 706 Park Ave on November 28th, 2020, from 10 AM to 9 PM.
Move to approve. Second.
Mrs. Jukusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton? Capson?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Right here.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero.
Motion to continue the hearing until Monday, November 23rd.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Mrs. Jukusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Capson?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Right here.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero.
Do we need a motion to adjourn?
No, because we because we continued it.
Right. It was confusing of the way the agenda was written. It was confusing to me.
And I as well.
Jen's just too smart for me, what can I say?
All right. It was in front of me, I read it. Next, we have minutes from our October 26th meeting, as well as executive. An executive.
Move to approve both. Seconded.
All those in favor?
Mrs. Jukusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Capson?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Right here.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have tax vouchers. It's a request approval for tax voucher, 2020 1109-01 to 2020 1109-03.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Mrs. Jukusa?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Capson?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Right here.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have our town administrator's report.
Good evening, Mr. President, Town Council, ladies and gentlemen. With respect to our COVID-19 update, this week, the state of Rhode Island began additional restrictions to stem the rise of COVID cases. Rhode Islanders should only be moving out for essential activities such as work, doctor's appointments, and grocery store. The stay-at-home advisory is in effect from 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM, Sunday through Thursday, 10:30 PM to 5:00 AM on Friday and Saturday. Social gatherings are now limited to 10 people or less, groups must remain consistent and be limited to interactions with the same people. All restaurants, bars, gyms, recreational facilities, personal services must close at 10:00 PM on Sunday, Sunday through Thursday, and 10:30 PM on Friday through Saturday. Retail establishments must actively ask customers not wearing masks to do so immediately from vacate to premises. A relief program for restaurants and bars that must close earlier than usual due to COVID-19 restrictions has been established. There is information available on our website and at Incondition Actations website. Regarding sports, the maximum of two spectators for any athlete younger than 18 years old will be allowed. All spectators and athletes are required to wear a mask at all times, including during practices and games. Two of the amateur sports have been categorized as low, moderate, and high-risk with limitations for each, as referenced in the update page. Additionally, the governor is revising the mask order to require that masks be worn at all times outside the home. Businesses will need to remind customers to wear masks and/or offer them when people are in the establishment. Rhode Islanders should have received an emergency phone alert at noon yesterday informing them of the new restrictions. And as a reminder, free asymptomatic COVID-19 testing is available through the Rhode Island portal, this portal dot R I, portal dot R I dot gov. With respect to our collective bargaining negotiations with police and DPDW, we have finally ironed out the last remaining issues surrounding the proposed agreements. And finance is finalizing the financial impact statements, and human resources is putting together the completed draft agreements. We will bring those documents before the council for your approval at the next council meeting. And then the Rhode Island Office of Health, Aging, and the Governor announced last week that this, the distribution of $800,000 to support local programs and services for older adults. The special funding will help community and senior centers mitigate the operational impacts of COVID. Municipalities will receive funding based on the number of older adults living in their community. The minimum grant award is $2,000, and funds will be used to help communities enhance services available to older adults and caregivers, investment supplies, and implement public health guidance, as we receive more information on the council. That is my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner. Okay, moving on, we have resignations and appointments. We have appointments to the Melville Park Committee. It's a reappointment.
Move to approve. Move Mr. Rizzi to the Melville Park Committee. Second.
All those in favor?
Mrs. Jukusa?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Capson?
Good. You're muted, Len.
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Right here.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. And then we have an appointment to the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee. We have a
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Jukusa?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Hamilton?
Aye.
Capson?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Ryan?
Aye.
Right here.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Okay. Onto bold business number one. This is a discussion regarding the previous National Grid presentation of the LNG facility at Old Mill Lane. In relation for submitting formal comments on behalf of the council, supporting one or more of the options provided. Let me just start this off by saying that I felt as a council, we should be putting something down to address the workshop at National Grid Health. They asked for our feedback. They asked for feedback from residents. They asked for feedback from the community. Felt that this was our opportunity as a council to provide, create the framework of a letter that we could then submit to National Grid before the December 1st deadline. What I would like to do tonight is discuss the framework of the letter. We can then craft the letter and put it on our agenda for the next meeting. That way, we can discuss the framework tonight. And then we move forward to our next meeting for a vote by the council. I would like to focus on, you know, the four solutions or options that were presented to us by National Grid. I do not want to have, this is not intended to be a public hearing for the National Grid presentation. I think during the presentation, we received a tremendous amount of questions and answers. That information is currently posted on the National Grid website. So we are aware of the concerns of our citizens. As counselors, we've probably all received emails or comments from citizens expressing their concerns or their comments about the facility. We are aware of them, but tonight I would like to just focus on our, from the counselors. I'd like to hear some feedback from the counselors regarding what the framework of the letter could be, what your concerns might be, what options you could consider. I personally, I'll start it off just because it was my item, but then I'll come back. You know, but essentially, I think, as we all heard during the presentation, you know, I'm opposed to Old Mill Lane being a long-term solution for National Grid to address their gas demands on the Quinac Isle. I think that was the sentiment of many of the folks that participated, you know, in that workshop. That facility originally, the LNG facility there, was intended to be a peak shaving operation. It was intended to take the curse off of the demand during the potentially coldest days during the winter. Initially, that was projected to be, you know, a couple of times during the winter. We heard from them, they did not even activate the facility last year. So, you know, the initial intent of that facility was So, you know, the, the initial intent of that facility was, was really to, to address a short-term need during the cold months. I think what, at least I saw during the presentation, was that facility becoming a potential longer-term solution. LNG could then supplement their future gas demand. They did show that as you project out towards 2035, the, the demand increases over those years. And I think the reliance on the LNG at Old Mill Lane would increase over the years. I would be opposed to Old Mill Lane being part of a long-term LNG facility. I did like, they did present four options. Just to recap those four options, one of them was a non-infrastructure solution, which they, they made reference to, you know, heat pumps and, you know, maybe solar options to get folks off of gas. I think they put out a number of, you know, you'd have to get about 9,000 homes or customers to convert over. And, you know, and they would have to do that by 2030, 2035. That seems like, you know, that's their non-infrastructure solution. I, I, I have my concerns about that. The second option was a, an LNG solution, which they talked about potentially extending a line over to a site on the Navy base. Mentioned that they did have a site over there that they had used previously. Their lease was expiring. That parcel was no longer available, but I believe through discussions with the Navy that they might have an alternate location, which would make that an option for them to relocate an LNG facility over at the Navy property. That again would help supplement the existing gas supply onto the island. Third option is a, is a new transmission line. And then the fourth option would be to continue the LNG at Old Mill Lane, you know, with, with, where they said demand measures and preserve the contingency of the service. You know, in my mind, my opinion, I think real viable option that would provide long-term reliability is a new transmission main onto the island. A second source onto the island, which would provide a loop for gas service so that if one feed goes down, they have a redundant feed and supply gas service to their customers. That's the, that's the long-term reliability. And if, if you look at any of the other options, you're talking about supplementing LNG into the existing system. We know that there are limitations with the, the current service onto Old Mill Lane. So I, I could question the long-term reliability of, of option two. But I would prefer option two if it meant that they would, you know, relocate that LNG facility over to the Navy base where it would then take it out of, you know, the residential area. My preference would, would be, you know, if I had to rank them, I would take option three as my number one choice and option two as my second choice. But, you know, those are my comments. I will open it up now to other counselors to see what your thoughts are on this topic. I want to go first, or Ms. Jupusa?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I have to say that the, I was pleased to just sit in on a City of Newport Energy and Environment Commission meeting where they discussed this issue at length with Mr. Hank Webster, who is in our audience. And I believe that there's so much information that was not presented to us by National Grid that it would behoove the council to hear additional information prior to making a decision about these options. So if you wouldn't mind, I would like to just have Mr. Webster make a few comments and propose that we table this discussion so that we can include more information that was not previously presented to us prior to crafting the letter of which you speak. So may I ask Mr. Webster to make a few comments?
I, I would. Well, I would ask him to be brief because, and, and again, not, I'm not trying to diminish whatever Mr. Webster is going to say. It's just, I mean, if that's a good provided presentation and they were asking for feedback on their proposal, so, or their options. I, I don't mind hearing from Mr. Webster, but I, I'm afraid by doing this, there's going to be additional folks that want to chime in as well.
Understood. And frankly, it's such an important issue. And in the, the manner in which the last meeting was conducted with National Grid, it was difficult to see what questions and answers were being asked even at their open house. So I just feel that it's important for us to have complete information. And yes, I, I believe Mr. Webster will keep his remarks very brief.
Okay. Is Mr. Webster okay? He's, yeah. No, we'll, we'll put Mr. Webster here.
Yeah, I was just wondering who Mr. Webster is, but I'm sure he can introduce himself.
Hi, can everyone hear me? All right. So yeah, my, my name is Hank Webster, and I'm the Rhode Island Director of Acadia Center. And we are a nonprofit clean energy, read data and policy analysis group throughout the Northeast. And so I just wanted to, to submit that there is a lot of information that was not outwardly presented.
Hold on, Mr. Webster, we lost you. Mr. Webster?
He's muted.
Webster, hold on.
Okay, okay. Can, can you hear me? I, I saw I got promoted.
We're going to ask you to start over. Now, now we can see you. You're on video.
All right. Thank you very much. Sorry for, for all of that, but my name is Hank Webster. I am the Rhode Island Director of Acadia Center. We are a Northeast energy policy and research organization, nonprofit. And I just wanted to submit for your discussion tonight that there is a lot of information that is buried deep within the report. That is things that energy analysts and policy experts hunt down and identify and work on as part of different technical working groups with National Grid. That is not making it into the presentations that I've seen going across the island. I've been tuning into, to the various proposals. So most importantly, I, I would recommend you refer to Figure 16, which is on page 97, I believe, possibly 98 of the, of their report. And it identifies, it's nine, page 97. It identifies that there are many benefits that are, are inherent in the non-infrastructure solution. Whereas with the other solutions, they, they don't exist. And that's actually the way that the Public Utilities Commission looks at these proposals. They look at what the, at the holistic view. And so when you look at that chart, you see that the non-infrastructure solution is actually much more affordable than the pipeline solution. I also want to note for members of the council that might not be aware, Massachusetts is currently undertaking a process where they're going to study and investigate a way to wind down their gas distribution system. So the idea that Massachusetts ratepayers are going to split the cost of a new transmission pipeline is a fleeting proposition. Not only locally, but also just nationally, we're seeing headwinds against these types of projects that make them financially unviable and, and end up getting canceled. Like the Atlantic Coast Pipeline recently was canceled because of these reasons. So I would encourage the council to really look into those clean energy options rather than an additional pipeline. Any time spent pursuing an additional pipeline would probably be time lost in getting to a solution that does shut down Old Mill Lane. And I will wrap up because I, I do respect the opportunity to speak and, and want to be brief. But we've done some modeling internally that get, just to give you some alternative cost figures on what it would take to actually fix the constraint issue and get to a situation where you could shut down Old Mill Lane, given the current problem. And you could do it for as little as $10 million and do it within a couple of years using just weatherization of homes on Equidnic Island as an example. You could also lace in things like heat pump, water heaters, or electric heat pumps, or gas demand response activities. In Massachusetts, they can save about 5% just using that, that strategy. And then you wouldn't need to build a big pipeline. You would be able to satisfy the energy needs of the island, and you'd have a safer community. And you save money for ratepayers, for your constituents, so.
Thank you. So, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that we table this discussion and hear the entire presentation, which I just heard Mr. Webster make to the City of Newport's Energy and Environment Commission. I'm sorry, it's, it's a bit last minute. That, that meeting just took place between six and seven. But I was so impressed with it, and I feel that it's important for this information to be brought forward. So my motion would be to table this item until the next meeting and allow Mr. Webster to make a full presentation.
And I would second that motion.
For discussion.
Sure, I will second for discussion. I will also add that on my preliminary assessment, I agree with you, Mr. Aguirre, continuing portable LNG at Old Mill Lane is off the table as far as I'm concerned. I don't think that's anybody's best interest within the Port, Town of Portsmouth. I just agree on the other options. I think most of the energy and investment should be, number one, in the non-infrastructure solution. I think the electric heat of our, of our energy use gives us the most flexibility to diversify where our energy comes from. I, I'll be, I, I haven't had the time or energy to dive as deep into this report as I feel would be necessary for me to make an educated decision. So I welcome the opportunity to hear from somebody else that has had the time and, and energy and resources to do the research and present us with the other side so we can make a more well-informed decision when, you know, crafting our opinion on this matter. So I, I support this, you know, additional resource and would very much like to hear what they have to say.
Hey, I would just like to say, before we move on to continuing this, this discussion, comments are due on December 1st. So if we continue this to November 23rd, we have really no time to finalize something and get it in by December 1st because we're going to get a presentation that night. I didn't, I don't think we have enough time. I, I mean, that would be my concern is making sure that, you know, we, we get comments in by December 1st. Or at least our, our concern in by December 1st. I, I don't think we're here to, to, to come up with, I, I don't think we're going to come up with a solution. But I think, you know, if we suggest or if we decide which option we're going to support, that's a, you know, we can vote on that as a council. But I think it's important that we at least move forward with crafting a letter or the framework of a letter for discussion at our next meeting. I, I, I think if we table this, we're, we're not, we're, we're not going to help ourselves by getting a letter in place by December 1st. That, that's my concern.
I, I think you were prepared to have that outline of a letter prepared tonight. And I feel like it could just as easily be done in two weeks, so.
Okay. Mr. Katzen?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, thank you for bringing this forward. I think it is very important for us to, to weigh in, provide comments. And I echo your sentiment and those of the others so far on the council that Old Mill Lane is not a, a solution we want to, we want to end that as soon as possible. How we do that is, is what we're talking about. I support the motion to table until we can hear from the individual, I'm sorry, this was a Webster, Mr. Webster. The National Grid report is very detailed. But I think it's important to recognize that the report was prepared by National Grid. And I'm not implying any sort of wrongdoing, but a company is often in the position of presenting information in a way that favors an outcome that they prefer. And so I think it's important for this council to hear a non-National Grid alternative perspective. How we come out on the decision and what position we take after that is certainly up to us. It might not change our, anyone's opinion at all, but it's certainly important to hear it. So if there is, I think we can get it all done on the 23rd. If you're concerned about that, we could schedule a meeting for next week. But I'll throw that on the table on, on the 16th.
Alternatively, could somebody reach out to National Grid and ask for an extra week for comments?
Hmm.
Our state representative is, has had conversations with N Grid, and they indicated that they would be okay with comments that came in after as long as they were made aware of the, that they were coming. However, I do believe that they can be prepared after the meeting in two weeks, just as they could have been prepared after tonight's meeting.
Well.
I would rather see us call an extra meeting if necessary, although I agree it's probably not necessary, than to craft an opinion without having all the information that we should have. Or at least alternate views of the information.
I move the question, Mr. President.
You have a motion and a second.
Hold on, hold on. I, I didn't know if you were going to ask for any other comments.
I was, I was going to.
I was waiting for you, Mr. President, to ask for. I agree with your comments earlier that the, the non-infrastructure solution is a good long-term, 30, 40 years down the road. The, the technology is starting to get there. It's not 100% there. Maybe it's 60, 70%. Plus, we don't have the infrastructure for the electricity to be able to handle it either. So while doing non-in, non-infrastructure solutions is good for the long term, it's not going to be effective in the short-term solution of moving Old Mill Lane off of the site. So the first thing we need to do is to try and work with the Navy and National Grid to get this moved over to the Navy property. The second solution, I agree with you, is a transmission pipeline. Regardless of non-infrastructure solutions, we still need to have a reliable source. Gas is not going to go away. We're not going to start cooking in restaurants, and people are not all going to change their houses to gas, to an electric heat. And honestly, the cost of electric heat is a lot more expensive generally as it stands right now than gas. So we need a long-term solution that gets us more away from oil, which is much more polluting and dirty than gas is, and combines all of one, two, and three. Number four, like everybody else's already, which is completely off the table. In terms of putting extra tankers down there, the, the pumping station or the station that's there now will continue and will never go away. But we need to look at putting in a solution that brings in a pipeline at the northern end of the island to create that loop so people don't run out of gas. The, the scary scenario is that what happened in Newport two years ago cascades out to Portsmouth, and all the Portsmouth gas residents also lose. And then we're stuck without any heat across the entire island. So looping in the pipeline is the only thing that makes the most sense. And as far as tabling it, we can craft an opinion with a letter that's done for the 23rd, hear the presentation, and make adjustments to it rather than having to create the entire wheel on the 23rd.
And I don't, I agree with Mr. Hamilton that a framework of a letter can be drafted to be now and then, and it can certainly be altered to reflect the content of whatever the council decides on the 23rd. I'll just reiterate, perhaps a little more bluntly, having watched National Grid present information for several years in a row relating to their plan to build a power generation facility in Boroughville, I am less than just willing to, unless.
Stop, stop, stop there. That's, that wasn't.
It, it.
National Grid wasn't building a power plant.
Information. It was National Grid presenting. It was National Grid presenting information. And I'm just like, as I said, it is not unusual for a company to present information in a way that favors a, an outcome that they prefer. There's nothing fraudulent or illegal or wrong about it. It's, but that said, it's appropriate, I think, for this council to hear information from a non-national grid source such as the Acadia Center.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. I think we do need as much information as possible. Fossil fuels, including gas, are, you know, certainly the infrastructure we have now. Unfortunately, it's sort of like an investment. The more you build, the more financial incentive you have to use. So the more pipelines we make, the harder it's going to be to switch away from that to use something else. And I'd point out that gas and oil are not produced in Rhode Island. Solar and wind are produced in Rhode Island, and there's a lot of initiatives to try to increase the amount we're producing. So I think we should at least hear the, you know, Acadia Center out. What ways can we move towards a greater reliance on the grid, on it, well, National Grid, on electrical power, which can be generated locally over the long term? And I agree with Mr. Hamilton. It's not an immediate, short-term solution, and there may be other things we want to do in the meantime. But I would be in favor of at least hearing that these people have obviously put a lot of thought into this. They have a lot of data. And I generally believe in trying to make decisions based on the most available data that can be gotten.
Right. I think everybody, Mr. Kelly, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right. So I'm not sure how to proceed. We have a motion to table it, which means we stop or.
We haven't voted on yet. We still have a discussion. I think the biggest thing for us is to create a letter that starts with, for lack of a better term, hell no, number four. And works on incorporating all the other three solutions to to provide our residents with the heat supply that they need. I mean, that's, that's as simple as that.
Well, I I think we can.
Needs a vote of the council to go ahead and prepare that. So long as they don't send it out until after the council has voted on it on the 23rd.
Well, that was the original suggestion by the president was to have this discussion, figure out where we're at, and then come back on the 23rd after the letter has been drafted to review. I don't see why we can't do both with Mr. Webster and the letter now so that we're not rushing around, having extra meetings and trying to squeeze it all in around Thanksgiving.
Yeah, I I think that there's going to be substantive information that will be presented that was not presented to us that we have an obligation to hear so that we make the best recommendation to Nat Grid. And if we need to hear this two weeks from now, we will still be able to craft a letter that reflects our opinion in two weeks that will be prepared in a timely manner. And I, again, I move the question that we table this item, hear more information, and then at the next meeting, decide which options we support.
Who's crafting the letter if we table it?
I'm not sure. If we don't know substantively which option we are going to go with, what exactly would be in the letter?
Well, in my mind, the letter would say we're opposed to Old Mill Lane being a long-term solution to their gas needs, which is how I started things off tonight. I mean, that was just my opinion that I don't, I don't foresee option four being a long-term solution. So with that being said, if we had a preference as a town, they have, National Grid provided us four options. I I think they're moving ahead under the framework of modifications to one of these four options. This is probably what National Grid is going to do. So depending on how the feedback comes in from the communities and everybody else, et cetera, that's our stakeholder, is what's going to help guide this. If 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 we're sitting here tonight and talking about which potential option we're going to, you know, recommend in in order of one, two, or three, or you know, one, three, two, I mean, it's just a recommendation. It's our comment. We get it into National Grid. If if we want to have Mr. Webster come back and give us a presentation, he's going to be talking, I mean, his focus has to be on options one, two, three, and four, because otherwise, we're going to be off base when we try to talk to National Grid. You know, I don't think it's, you know, National Grid gave a presentation. I'd be curious if 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 Mr. Webster has provided those same comments already to National Grid. And so if he's already done that, then great, then then, you know, we can maybe chime in from from that same perspective. But I I just, I don't, I don't know, I don't see why delaying this is, I don't, I don't see the benefit. I think we could still move ahead and crafting the letter and adjust it on the 23rd once we get some input from Mr. Mr. Webster. I would be okay with that. I just, I think if we craft the letter, then we're going to see it in our backup ahead of the meeting, and then we can have something to make comments on. I don't see us crafting a letter on the 23rd. I don't.
What you've described, the letter that needs to be crafted, is quite simplistic. It would say we want the option that keeps it on Old Mill Lane off the table, and we would like to, and then the fill-in-the-blank part comes after we hear all the information that we can to make a good selection. So I'm not sure what the complicated nature of this structure letter is. It's just going to say what we pick and that we do not want it to stay on on Old Mill Lane. And we want it off as soon as possible. So I'm not sure I understand why we are making the drafting of the letter such a complicated issue. We will make a substantive choice at the next meeting after we hear information that goes beyond what National Grid has provided us.
Mr. President, if I may.
Sure.
If we need a draft of a simplistic letter that aligns our options in order of preference to put on the agenda for next meeting, I would be happy to draft a letter. We can put it on the agenda and we can review it and adjust things based on the input we're getting.
How can you do that if we table it? If you table it, we table it until the next meeting. I that's what I'm getting at.
We have, but if that's all we need, then fine, we can draft a letter till next time. But I, we're not going to vote on our options right now.
You say we're voting on options right now. I say we were crafting a letter, getting feedback on our discussion for the next meeting. If 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 we want to move forward with additional feedback, it sounds like Mr. Webster's comments are going to be focused on option one, right? Non-infrastructure solution, was that?
Correct.
Right? So so we know that there's going to be his position on on option one. I still feel strongly that from a reliability standpoint, a second line onto the island, it doesn't have to come from Massachusetts. It could come from another source. It could come over the Mount Hope Bridge. It could come over the Newport Bridge. So I I think a second feed onto the island redundancy is really something that has to be considered for long-term reliability. At least if they're considering a transmission pipeline, those options are on the table, or at least could be brought to the table.
If if so long as we have an opportunity to hear from the individual, Mr. Webster, who purports to have information, I don't know, Ms. Ujipuza said she's brought the presentation. As long as we have an opportunity to review that and have a discussion about it, then, you know, I have no problems with drafting whatever anybody wants to draft on the understanding that come the 23rd, the substantive content of it might be dramatically or not altered by this council.
And could I make one other point, Mr. President, that was being made at the Newport meeting I attended? Many people wanted to stress one important point, which is that we cannot conflate the issue of the Newport gas crisis solution with what Nat Grid is presenting right now, because they are talking about expanding gas services, and that is a different issue than responding in a way that protects people from the gas crisis that we saw a couple winters ago. So that is also an important point to understand, which frankly, I was not as cognizant of until I heard these facts being discussed. Even you yourself just now and Mr. Hamilton are talking about safety as if what we're talking about is to try to avoid the gas crisis happening again, when in fact, there are many, many facts that Mr. Webster brought out and other people that shows that what we're talking about in the Nat Grid proposals is not protecting us from a crisis, but expanding gas. And that's a totally different issue. So I do believe that we can hear the information that's going to be presented as all the other towns or as Newport and Middletown are going to be hearing so that we can make an educated decision about what we would like to recommend to protect our citizens, both physically and financially. Because the cheapest option is not presented accurately by Nat Grid in their 17-page PowerPoint. If you look at the graph that's on page 97 of the 125-page report Nat Grid presented, it shows that the option that is the is cheaper to the consumers is the no-infrastructure option, which I was surprised to hear, frankly. And that information comes from Nat Grid's own document, and it was never presented to us that way. So I think it's time that we have a fuller understanding of what the proposals are made by an outside party with expertise. Thank you.
Fair enough. Okay.
Mr. President, just one more comment on that. It's National Grid did say that the non-infrastructure solution was the least expensive of all three. But they didn't think that they would have enough buy-in to get to that point because listen, National Grid also does all the electricity, so they really don't care which one you buy. They're still going to make money. If you want to go with the non-infrastructure solution across the board, they're still going to make money because people are going to be buying electricity. So it leave National Grid out of it. Let's talk about safety and the long-term viability of a gas source that is going to be available for the next 30 or 40 years, because electricity is not going to catch up to that.
I disagree.
One at a time, please. Ms. Ujipuza, you had your hand up first.
No, I'll let Ms. Abbott go.
Okay.
This is a big problem. It's not a black and white, one or the other, 100% this or 100% that. I think the non-infrastructure solution is frankly, in my personal opinion, a no-brainer. We have to do that to significantly invest in that. That is a separate issue from National Grid building reliability in their own system. I am opposed to a transmission pipeline because I think that's just doubling down on fossil fuels. So we should request that we invest in non-infrastructure solutions because that has the best benefits for our community. And National Grid can look into other alternatives outside of Old Mill Lane to improve their reliability on a Navy property or whatever. But doubling, tripling, whatever the pipeline moves to natural gas into Quinick Island when we're trying to get away from fossil fuels is a very backwards way to approach this. So, you know, I would say let's invest in number one heavily. Look at number two from a safety and reliability point of view, and it's not one or the other, and it's not do or die or one or the other. And it's it's a combination of solutions together that gets us invested.
I'll just say that I believe that all of us have the same goals of safety, economic value, and also reliability. But we need to understand what the options are and which ones get us to those goals in the best way. And it just seems to me that waiting two weeks to hear the kind of presentation that's being presented to the other towns is important. And in fact, frankly, this proves a lot of what Hamilton has been saying tonight, but we'll leave it there. Thank you so much.
And it's the least we can do is listen to the other side or some.
No, nobody has suggested that we don't listen to the other side. We're just suggesting that you get a letter together so that we can review it on the 23rd. And adding the pipeline may add more capacity, but what it really does is allow for the gas to flow in a circular motion so that there are no dead ends so that people aren't starving of gas. It's got less to do with the capacity and adding more pipeline as it does to do with creating a loop so that people are at the other end of the loop and continue to receive gas. It's just simple physics and gas.
I think we're going in circles at this point now.
I I understand, Mr. Mr. President. I mean, I only deal with gas all day long in terms of pipelines in, I just was at a weld shop in New Hampshire this afternoon, this morning. So it's just the way the gaiter of gas and the physics of gas is, period. That's all.
So are, we have a motion to table it. And then we will, I guess, attempt to craft a letter with input at the meeting on the 23rd. All those in favor?
Ms. Ujipuza?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hey.
Mr. Capson?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Ryan?
Hi.
Hey. Motion passes five to. We will move on.
The President, do you want to respond to any of the questions that are listed on here? Well, can somebody screenshot them so we can answer them at the next meeting?
I have them all here.
Hey.
I don't know if we can print them. Are they printable or?
I don't know. Do we have that capability?
I think after the meeting, in the meeting recording, we might be able to print all the questions.
Hang on. All right, hang on. I think I can copy and paste them. Let me see.
Yeah, I got them.
Okay, I got them. I will send them to the clerk to be put in the backup for next meeting.
Good. Eddie.
Sorry, I missed, I missed a couple, but I'll get them all. Don't dismiss them. I just missed the first one. Okay.
Good.
Got it. Okay, got them all. I'm going to send them to the clerk right now.
Next item, old business number two. We will request it's an update on the status of a comprehensive community plan. Mr. Bradley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. A couple of days ago, a week or so ago, Mr. Rayner asked me to put together an update of where we are in the comprehensive planning. He asked me to answer a few questions. Where do we stand? What exactly is left to do? And when will this be brought to the council? Where we stand right now is Assistant Planner Ashola and myself are busy working our way through a punch list of comments that we have received over the last year or two actually of of addressing what they see as deficiencies in each of the elements. We have been sending the elements individually up to statewide planning to get their preliminary comments. And that, as I will explain in a moment, that has a great benefit for us. But we are currently working through the punch list. They primarily, the 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 comments primarily have to do with the maps, readability of the maps, you know, the colors and hatching and so forth are not very readable. They have asked us to 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 put some items on that that we talk about in the narrative onto maps, certain identifying certain water bodies, saltwater marsh areas, historic and cultural features, recreational features and so forth, which we haven't done yet. and cultural features, recreational features and so forth, which we haven't done yet. We're working our way through that problem. The other, we're, we're working our way through creating those maps and getting the text in the, each of the elements aligned with the, with, with the maps, you know, the referencing of the maps and so forth. And the second thing that they've asked us to do in a couple of places is to see if we can't, we, we write up fairly old data, 2016, 2013, and they would like us to update some of the tables with newer data. So we're working our way through that. The second, what exactly is left to do, what is left to do is for us to finish this punch, punch list. What we've been doing as we finish, as we finish polishing each of the elements, we send them to Weston, Weston Sampson, our contractor, who it will then, once they get all of the elements that we have finished with our polishing, with our punch list, they will combine them all into a, one giant PDF, which is all of the elements and all of the maps together, and send that off to statewide planning for their review. They have, they are by law required to set up a 30-day comment period for that final, complete draft of the plan. They have 40, they have 15 days to do that. So perhaps 45 days from when Weston and Sampson sends the entire package up to statewide planning, they will have a comment period that will then close. During this comment period, what they do is shop it around to our adjacent communities and all of the agencies in, at the state, DEM, CRMC, DOT for comments. They will compile all of those comments and get them back to us. They have 30 days to get them back to us. We have then 60 days to address any deficiencies that we have, and then get back to them, which they then come back to us. And the town, and the third question is, when will this be brought to the town council? And my answer to that is, it depends a little bit upon the, the statewide planning. If we had not been sending these elements up individually, they would have up to, statutorily, they would have up to 120 days to get it back to us. But since they've seen all of these, and the comments that they've sent back to us are relatively minor, that, that we could, that, that will be sped up a, a great deal. So my answer to you is, when will this be brought to the council? I would say somewhere in probably the February or so timeframe, and then you can hold your public hearing and, and then we, depending upon what comments and changes the council wants to make on the draft of the plan, it will go back up to statewide planning. If there's nothing really substantive, it can come back to us really quickly. If there is, then we'll have to, there'll be a bit of back and forth to make sure that our, our plan is, or any individual elements of our plan are approvable. So that's where we are.
Thank you, Mr. Crosby. So it's looking like the March, February, March timeframe, we'll see the draft that's been vetted initially by statewide planning. We'll have our public hearings, and then any revisions we incorporate and it goes back for the final okay at statewide planning, too.
That's correct. That's correct. I, and that's correct. And I would like to point out that the planning board has already had their public hearing. And at the time, I told them that we would be engaging in this process of, we looked through all these comments, and they were not substantive enough for us to go back to the planning board, and they agreed to have us just go right on ahead and make this happen. So their, the planning board is good to go with this timeline as well.
Okay. So move, just to move forward here as we progress, and thank you for this, you know, summary of where we're at. I think what would be helpful is if we could get an update, you know, every month or every six weeks or so, just to, just to touch base on, you know, the punch list and, and getting things buttoned up and submitted back to, you know, statewide planning, just so that we can be updated and keep, and help keep it on track. That's all.
Absolutely. Will do.
Do you have any? Mr. Morris? Can we, Mr. Morris, can you hear us?
Yes, I can now. Just make a first, a very quick comment. And that is, I'd like a commitment from the council that when this public hearing process begins, the comprehensive plan, that it be done in public and not through one of these Zoom meetings where we miss large parts of what's said, and have a difficulty getting and make our comments. So I think that this is an important, an important document. It's very convoluted. It's very extensive. It's been worked on for a long time, and we can certainly wait a few more months until we get the opportunity to meet in public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. I mean, it's a very good point about, you know, public meeting and what the venue may be. We really don't know where we're going to be in March, February timeframe. Hopefully, things will be looking better than they do right now. But I mean, at this point, we can, we can agree that we'll, we'll figure out a format for a public hearing, but we'll have to do it guidance and what's allowed. I know that these Zoom meetings are not ideal, but if we're in a situation where it's the only way to move forward, I think we have to make every effort to try to move it forward. I think we'll have some discretion at that point, but I mean, the focus right now is, is let's get the plan revised, back up to statewide planning, and back in front of us, and, and then we'll, we'll, we'll know better where we are back in, in February, March timeframe. And then we can, we can address the public hearing at that point, and hopefully we'll figure out a way, and, and things will be better, maybe. Mr. Morris, I'd like nothing more than to see you standing in front of it.
Well, I'm sure that's true. However, I'll point out that we've been at this for four years, if I can remember this correctly, and a few more months won't hurt us.
I, I understand, and I appreciate your, your patience. And we will see where we go, what we can do with the public hearing. And if we can put it off a little bit, we'll put it off. I mean, but we'll have to, we'll have to make that decision in February or March. Right now, we still got a lot of work to do to get, to get to February or March. So thank you, Mr. Crosby. Anything else from councilors? Comments?
President, I just want to add that a lot of constituents have told me they really appreciate our meetings on Zoom. They were not able to participate before. And so I would really highly urge that we continue both Zoom and live if we can, because Zoom has been actually a benefit for increasing public participation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ujipuza. And I, I have had a lot of positive feedback on the Zoom meetings. I, I don't know how it works once we're not under the situation we're in, but if there's a way forward, we can, we can absolutely entertain it at that time. They, they do have their, they do have their benefits for those that can't get out much. But thank you. Now, move on to new business discussion. I asked this to put on here. It's a letter regarding the Department of Navy, Navy Facilities Engineering Command to form a perimeter boundary survey of Naval Station Newport and its surrounding properties. For those of you that may remember, when the Navy started to revisit their property line a few years back, we started getting a lot of calls, questions from residents that, you know, the Navy was taking over their property. And in fact, the Navy's fence line, if I'm, may understatement, but I, I think the Navy said their fence line was probably 20 feet actually off their property. So the fence was probably 20 feet into the Navy property, and what was happening was is residents were actually approaching upon the Navy's land. So the Navy is, is, you know, set out to, to re-document their perimeter parcels, their, their perimeter boundary. They have sent out a letter notifying residents, but I just wanted to put it out there tonight. Not everybody may get the letter, and they get displaced. Just letting people know that if you do a butt Navy land, they are conducting a perimeter survey. They are only trying to locate their property line. They did ask homeowners for permission to get onto their property. I guess some of the property might be inaccessible from the Navy side. It's wetland areas and such. So this really is just a, a letter informing residents that they're going to, that the Navy is out there doing some survey work. We don't have to do anything, and I just wanted to get it out there and notify the residents. So I don't really think we need any action. Any comments, questions? None? Okay. On to correspondence.
Move to receive.
To receive.
Say.
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujipuza?
Hi.
Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Capson?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Brad Yar.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. On to future meetings. What you see before us, here's our note, number 23, Town Council Meeting. It may change if the election results are, are certified. We would have a special meeting on December 7th, and then regularly scheduled meetings after that, 14th, and December 28th, and then January 11th. That's all we have for this evening. Thank you all.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor?
Ms. Ujipuza?
Hi.
Ms. Abbott?
Hi.
Mr. Hamilton?
Hi.
Capson?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Dr. Ryan?
Hi.
Brad Yar.
Hi. Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you all.
Fair enough.
Good night.
Good night. Good night.